Good.
Washing stuff down and he'll give me all of their plans once they're.
Live again with.
Hey, welcome back, everybody. This is the afternoon session of April 18th, and I apologize for us being late, but lunch was kind of delayed today. So we're going into our next agenda item. This is an action item, development agreements, outside improvements. I guess I should put my glasses on. Staff report, P and Z.
Well, it's kind of, you know, we've been talking, Brian and Ian Jeff about what we're going to do for off-site road improvements or other improvements as they come along that are needed off-site. You know, because of your recent decision with the impact fees and not necessarily maybe going forward with those. Came to the conclusion amongst the three of us that we need to redo the development agreements and start down that path. Make them completely voluntary, put that in the recitals in the development agreement. And our plan, and to do this based upon the 2007 CIP. You know, there was the 2005, there's the 2007, 2007. Of course, the construction costs are outdated. But we're just going to go with those because they were developed and they're consistent across the board. At some point, if you believe, you know, you want to continue doing these development agreements. While we're waiting on the new value, Idaho State statutes and that type of thing. We can update our costs, but we would have to have the engineer do that. Using the 2007, we're going to make consistent decisions across the board. Everybody will be treated the same based upon the CIP area they are in. Oki's developed, is developing a development agreement. With recitals that this is completely voluntary, which we think will meet the requirements of the state statute. And he also wrote up a kind of a format letter, a boilerplate letter that Jeff is going to start using for responses to planning and zoning commission applications.
Because my question may be for you, Brian, would be okay with it's voluntary right now, but we can't make that a condition of approval.
It will be.
Until we get 67, 65, 11A changed.
The, yes, the legislation, the legislation needs to continue forward. The process in the interim is to negotiate these voluntary, these voluntary commitments from developers for off-site improvements. Then once we have more clear authority in the statute. Then we can, we can impose these as conditions of approval. If, if that's what planning and zoning commission feels, feels is appropriate. Couple of things that I would like some clarification from this group and including the board's input on is. I, I really see this as a multi-step process. The development agreement is the last step in the process. First step in the process is a comprehensive, a comprehensive letter from the road department. And I guess maybe let me take one step back. The, the input that I want is this is really focused only on roads. There's, there's, there's no other, no other contributions that we're looking for or focused on at this point in time. Just impact on roads. And so any contribution that's made for off-site improvements will be for roads and roads only. And I think just, I think from what I've heard, that's obviously the priority. But really, really where you, you want to see this money invested for, for off-site improvements is roads. And that's, that's what I have focused on up until now. And if you want me to continue down that path, then that's, that's the path we're on. The, the other part of this is I mentioned a comprehensive letter from the road department is the first step. And, and so I've worked with Cindy and worked with Jeff in coming up with the format letter. And we suggested in this letter, the 2007 CIP as the standard for determining what a per lot cost contribution should be. I like that for a couple of reasons. One is you had, you had an evaluation done in 2007 based on, you know, all of the engineering. You know, the, all the engineering issues or technical issues that were beyond my capabilities. I think were studied in 2007. And the other part that I like and what Cindy mentioned is you can apply that to large, medium, small subdivision plats. Doesn't matter if you're developing four lots or 400 lots. It's, everybody gets treated the same. So these are very positive, these are very positive contributions or, or aspects. The thing that I know we're going to get questioned on, and I'm sure it's going to come from you and the planning zoning commission and anybody else is. 2007 prices is a screaming good deal. Are we really, are, are we really shooting ourselves in the foot by relying on something that's that dated? It's purpose of this meeting, purpose of this discussion. Quite possibly, yes. Do you want to move forward with the 2007 data or do you want to put a pause on this? And get that updated so we can use 2022 information using the same concept. I love, I really like the outline of what's already been done, but updated so it reflects what the, what the actual construction costs are. The format letter, I want you to think about that and then kind of tell me what you want. The format letter that I developed with Cindy and Jeff last week. Kind of gave a suite of options for the planning and zoning. One option, one recommendation is you can consider this 2007 CIP. And make that part of your recommendation as the planning and zoning commission for the road department to negotiate this road development agreement that's coming as. Or alternatively, you can engage a professional, a competent professional to do a site-specific analysis and then come up with a recommendation. That is an option as well. And maybe we need to let planning and zoning choose which options they like the better of, of the two. And, and kind of give us their guidance as it relates to that. The good thing about that is you're going to have up-to-date numbers. So it'll reflect what actual building costs are today. I think the downside is that could really slow things down quite a lot. And so I'm not sure that's, that's a better option necessarily for that, that point. And then I think what's also reflected in this proposed format for road department contributions to these P and Z meetings is things that are more site-specific. We picked Roseberry Park as kind of a test case because we know this is coming. And based on, based on some of the issues in that area, we all know that the S Bridge is a problem. And so put that specifically in this recommendation letter because it's a site-specific problem that we know. Based on the proximity of Roseberry Park to where the S Bridge is, it will be, that the S Bridge will be impacted. So I guess the point that I'm trying to make here is if we're going to add site-specific issues to this letter from Jeff, that's going to put a lot of work on Jeff. He's going to have to be, you know, I think he's going to have to do a site visit in advance of planning and zoning meetings. Be able to give a little bit more specific recommendations towards, you know, what ought to be done with the S Bridge. Or one of the things that's, it's fresh on my mind because Thursday nights, planning and zoning. There was some testimony from some of the opponents to the Gold Fork subdivision that the road was too narrow. And so that's, that's another issue. I think we're going to have a whole bunch of those rabbit holes that we're going to have to chase down. Or maybe we don't want to chase them down. I don't know. Kind of throwing it all out there for, for you all to give us some feedback on.
Honestly, I think it's a great idea. I think we're, I'm glad we're going back to it. I would rather, you know, I know it's going to be voluntary. And so we're not going to deal with these issues in the court, hopefully. But I think, you know, part of our subdivision process is that you want to subdivide this piece of ground. Here's the things we want you to do. Build it up to private road standards, public road standards, put in the broadband. These are the things that we want you to do. Now, we've got access to this subdivision that we're going to need some money to help with. And I think Jeff knows those. The issue I think is going to be, is there going to be enough money coming to really do anything?
It'll be partial.
So you're going to have to save that money?
Subdivision to replace the S Bridge.
Right.
Be some of their money, some of their money, some of their money, some of our money.
So are we going to save that money? Are we going to put that away until the next guy next door subdivides?
What we were talking about is how you can't have a timeline on this CIP road development money. You can't give me a year to go spend $6 million to replace that bridge when that's probably a year project.
Let's take Gold Fork, for example. Okay, they want to subdivide. We need some impact or some money from you guys to buy right-of-way. Because it's too narrow going into your development.
That's part of a dedication.
That's where the chow is going to come in.
That's going to go straight back to the developer. Well.
Dedicate.
Yeah, within their boundaries, they will dedicate that 35-foot right-of-way. But from getting from the highway to their boundary.
How are you going to buy all that right-of-way when you've only got $100,000 to work with? I mean, and I don't want to, and I think also what it's going to do is it's going to probably create higher density development. Because that developer is going to come back saying, instead of doing 10 lots, I'm going to do 20. Because I, I can spread that cost out over more lots. So it's going to change the face of how development is done too, but that's okay.
And what we had talked about on the general ledger side of things was, so each one of these has a named area. And underneath that named area, say, Roseberry Park. Underneath that is a general ledger that holds those funds specific to that entire area. Until we either get a grant and this becomes our grant match, you know, they're not going to be commingled funds at all. It'll be specific to that section of road base.
So who is going to do that accounting function? Doug or the road department?
We've done it in the past, and I'm pretty sure I've sent you, well.
No, the clerk does it.
We've taken care of, we've done an Excel spreadsheet. Might have told everybody. It's only as good as the input. So if Doug receives $100,000 for whatever, we need to know down there. We keep track of it on our spreadsheet. And every time we buy, we replace the culvert on Gold Fork Road, keep track of my money, $5,000. Check, there's $5,000 spent out of that $100,000. And everything we do on that section of CIP, we notch it off until that money's gone.
But I don't think that the road department should be handling that at all for transparency issues.
Right.
We have to have the clerk's office do that. You turn in a request for payment or whatever. It comes out underneath that line item, and every month you can have general ledger report that shows you what's left in that. I don't want the road department maintaining.
I mean, it's, that's what we've done in the past. I mean, Jerry's going back through what Jerry has done, Gordon and whoever else that. Yeah, we had millions of dollars, but there was.
It was committed.
There was no division on.
Oh, yeah. No.
Where it was.
Supposed to go.
Spent.
So I want to, I want to emphasize a couple of things on this particular topic. When we communicate with one another and with the public, these are not impact fees. And impact fees require the monies be spent within an eight-year period of time. And, and a whole set of criteria that come along with accounting for those impact fees to report back to those who paid the impact fees that it got spent for the purpose that those impact fees were contributed. This, this is, it looks a lot like an impact fee, but it's not it. We're not, we're not necessarily following that impact fee requirement. However, when you account back to the developer that makes these contributions, I would, I think it's fair to assume that they're going to demand some sort of a report or explanation that their dollars were spent for the benefit of their, of their project. And, and so we need to have some sort of a system in place to report or account for how those, how those dollars were spent within, within the CIP boundary. But at the same time, the county needs some level of, of flexibility to determine priorities within the CIP and the timeframe for which it's spent. So you can leverage those dollars to maximize the value of the contribution.
And I think too, maybe we need to look at, do we really need to buy more right-of-way? Can we get by with a, with a 40-foot road versus a 60-foot road here?
It's in our standards.
I know it's in our standards, and we kind of shot ourselves in the foot sometimes doing that. You know, it's like we talked about, every time you guys plant my road, you plant wider. So I move my fence out and you come in, you plant wider, and pretty soon you've got a landing strip there. That's how you get the right-of-way. But in certain circumstances, we may have to just be happy with the right-of-way we have.
I don't know that we have any 40-foot, do we?
Duncan is, Duncan Lane is 40-foot, or part of Willie is, one of those two.
So when those things get developed in the future, you add on to your right-of-way. I mean, you get every single piece of right-of-way you can while it's appearing, and you just build within the rest of it until, you know, somebody's going to develop it someday.
I agree. I agree with that 100%.
Problem is right now is, well, if not right now, it always has been. Throw a number out there, 80% of our roads, we don't have right-of-way on, road easement roads. Just like through yours.
All easement.
Wisdom, West Valley, going on right-of-way on that road. It's an easement through somebody's property. Maybe there is right through there, but.
So Brian, is there anything in code, this is after so many years of public funds going into an easement that's yours?
Be taken.
Then it becomes.
In order for us to acquire.
Prescriptive.
In order for us to acquire a right-of-way, we have to give fair market value for that.
So what's the difference, honestly?
So a prescriptive, a prescriptive easement is, what else says? We've been maintaining this road for some, we've got government money in it. So we have a maintenance easement on that road.
Well, the difference.
We can't tell Idaho Power, yeah, you can go put power lines. And we can't call the sewer company and say, oh, yeah, put it out here along the fence.
We can't put a trail.
Not our property.
He can't do a trail.
The easement. Easement.
Not on an easement.
An easement is for a specific purpose. And, and that if that easement is for a road, that is the purpose of the easement. And you can't expand that easement without necessarily violating, violating the law. Right-of-way, we own it. We own it. We control it. We determine whether the sign goes in there, whether there's utilities that can be placed there. And, and so we have a much broader discretion on how that property is, is used. So the fair market value for a right-of-way isn't the same value as a building lot. You know, those, there's a different value for, for rights-of-way, but, but we still have to pay fair market value. So one of the, one of the things that I've included almost as a standard, as a standard recommendation from the road department in new plats for review is that rights-of-way be part of that dedicated process. And that we can, we can give a dollar-for-dollar credit for a dedication of a right-of-way to, to the road department. I think planning someone who's already doing that anyway. I just threw it in, in this particular letter just to keep it in all future letters. So if developers aren't familiar with that process, if they're.
So if you, you know, if you, if you dedicate to, if you ask people to dedicate to the county, then we're. We go back to this deal where we're doing, we're not taking on any new roads to maintain right now, you know, and.
We still have the road. We just got more right-of-way width.
I know. It's just, but does any kind of obligation from the county go forward with that for any kind of maintenance? See, that's, you know.
Yes, it should because.
Right-of-way. Particularly winter maintenance.
We really shouldn't be dedicating right-of-ways on private roads. Because that doesn't make, that, that doesn't make a lot of sense. If it's private road, then it's their.
Yeah, we don't.
It's their road, so.
I don't think we have to take over the maintenance either. If we disclose upfront on that plat that, you know, yeah, we might have, we might own that right-of-way now, but you have to have an HOA in place and that HOA needs to maintain this road. I mean, just put it right up front. We have, there's a lot of county road out there that we own that we do not maintain right now.
Meaning winter maintenance, stump plow.
Well, even Bladen in the summer. Emma Loop, that came up last year. That's a 70-foot right-of-way all the way through there. A public right-of-way.
Still county road, the maintenance level is just different.
Right.
And I think.
We're saying, kind of saying the same thing, just different way of getting about it.
Well, I don't understand why we would even have to give them a credit. You want to build a subdivision. Our subdivision ordinance says you will dedicate the road to the county. You will maintain it. I don't, I don't know why we have to give them a credit back. I mean, they.
Because they're giving us land, so we give them a credit for the right-of-way.
We're giving them the ability to develop their land. We're giving them the ability to develop that land.
No, we, we have to, we actually have to pay fair market value to avoid the taking.
Oh, okay. Okay, I, I see what's going on. We're talking about two different things. You're talking inside the subdivision.
Yes. Well, private roads, we don't.
Yeah, so, so the conversation started.
Sorry.
Any obligation.
Outside.
Outside. So like the one on Norwood and Johnson, that's an easement road that we don't own anything on. He's going to dedicate us 35 feet of right-of-way on the little section of Johnson and a little section of Norwood.
Same thing.
What's inside the subdivision?
That's their deal.
Got it.
Roseberry Park, same deal. From West Roseberry Road, that chunk of land that goes to the center of West Roseberry Road is currently an easement.
No, that's right-of-way.
So when we come back to the, what started this, so is what, how we're going to deal with this from a standpoint of planning and zoning using this development agreement process. Right? I mean, so I know we have a lot of those, you know, roads that we have right-of-way issues, but. So we come back to this and we ask them to voluntarily give us money, essentially. I can't, for some kind of development process in this. This, this piece of land here that we're going to consider what a development area, is that what you call it, the LID or?
CIP. It's a CIP.
CIP. So if you go into that, so you just, so then if there's some need, Jeff needs to put up a sign or he needs to put on roads, and so you focus on the roads. So if he has to do anything on roads, wouldn't necessarily go directly to assist that developer just specifically. It's for the area, which makes a lot more sense to me. But they need to know it upfront. You know, we're going to ask you for help here, but you're going to be, basically, you're buying into helping this area.
The.
Yeah.
The, the concept is that a subdivision in that area will.
Impact.
Provide more of a burden to the resources that are available to Jeff's department. For all-season maintenance. That's winter maintenance, summer maintenance.
Right. Anything that's needed for that.
Correct.
Infrastructure, the road infrastructure.
25 houses, springs, 50 cars. Roads in that area more often than roads outside of the area.
So I can go back to your suggestion earlier that immediately the guy said, well, like, what do I get out of this specifically? And it might have a bearing on whether or not he'll agree voluntarily to do this, but.
What if they say no, but we feel it's too great of an impact at the P and Z?
So the standard, so the standard.
Deny it.
Condition of approval for preliminary plat. Cindy and I have worked on this language and are recommending this to the commission that they put this as a standard condition of approval for all subdivisions is that they come to the road department and the board of county commissioners and negotiate a voluntary road development agreement. If we cannot come to terms on this road development agreement, the plat goes back to planning and zoning for reconsideration.
Yeah.
So then it's up to planning and zoning to decide whether or not they want to move forward with, with approving the plat without the road development agreement or with, with one. So it does actually come back to planning and zoning for reconsideration if the, if the RDA all the part.
Well, yeah, it's a pretty clever way to get, basically do some arm twisting, essentially is what it kind of comes down to. We, you know, so. Well, I think it's only fair though, because they're going to destroy the road from their development out to the major. That road is going to take a lot more material, a lot more work now to keep it up. And I could see, okay, $50,000, whatever that number is, you could put that much on gravel on that section of road. Right. And a couple of new culverts, and you've spent that money.
I certainly don't view this as forcing developers into a development agreement against, against their will or their wishes. It, with or without a road development agreement, it's within the purview of planning and zoning to determine whether or not a subdivision proposal is approved or not. So, so there's no guarantees ever that a plat will be approved. Planning and zoning has denied a couple in, in recent months. So, so that, that can happen. This is just going to be another component. We, we have to, we have to use this on a voluntary basis just because of that, that statutory issue. It becomes less of a concern once we get that.
So I'm assuming then, because I'm going to play this clear out to the end here. They come to us, we can't agree on a development agreement. Goes back to P and Z. P and Z can go back and say, you know what, because you don't have a road development agreement, we're only going to allow you five lots instead of 30.
Yeah.
That would be the compromise.
Yeah.
So the process, and we'll leave Roseberry Park out of it. That's a PUD that will come to you. This is a simple subdivision. Now, they come in, they say, oh, I want to plat this road. Okay, this is what you have to do according to our ordinance, but you should go talk to Jeff. And I always tell people, go talk to Jeff. So then they apply, we send out our notice. Jeff writes us his standardized letter that says, in that area, here's the 2007 CIP. You can either voluntarily, you know, apply with this or you can hire a professional that does their own analysis about your impacts. And so you give them the option there. They can choose, if they can show us that they're not going to have that much impact. You know, that will be considered too. And then it goes to the planning and zoning commission. The planning and zoning commission approves the CUP for the preliminary plat with the condition that they work with Jeff and the board of county commissioners to develop this road development agreement. And if they can't agree with Jeff and the board of county commissioners, then it goes back to planning and zoning for reconsideration. Now, prior to the recordation of the final plat, Oki and Jeff will have created this road development agreement that is paid prior to recordation.
What I like about that idea is the fact that the developer has the option to give us a check, whatever amount that is. Or he can hire his own guys to go out and build that road up. So that you don't even have to do the work. That's what I would encourage.
There's, all of those options are on the table.
Yeah.
Part of the, part of those, sit down at the table, put a pencil to paper and figure out what's going to work best for everybody.
And if a developer comes in in today's world and looks at this based on 2007 values, he's not going to hire his own person.
Well, and I'd like to know, at what point are we going to upgrade this? So Jeff, we're going to do a master plan.
It's all part of the master plan, I think.
Perfect.
And if we're creating a lot of anxiety by using 2007 numbers, I'd rather hear it now so we don't get. And if we're creating a lot of anxiety by using two thousand seven numbers, I'd rather hear it now so we don't get launched into the middle of this and then have, have somebody come back. And I, I, we haven't had this conversation with planning and zoning either. And I would anticipate that they'll question that as well.
I'd say we use two thousand and seven until it's updated.
And that's why, that's why it's even part of the conversation is that's the best available data that we have.
And it does, basically, based on just what I said, in that two seven, two thousand seven is gonna show a less monetary impact than anything they hire for a current. Another, you know.
Which could bite us in the butt.
It could.
It's better than nothing. Right now, we have nothing.
Well, that's just it. And like you were saying, it's already done. We have numbers.
I think I would update that to our values now, you guys.
I think you just.
Let's be straight up with folks. This is, this is what it costs now, not in seven.
We don't know what it costs now.
We're guessing.
So this is.
How did they do in seven? They guessed in seven.
The engineer. So this is our current path. Now, in parallel to the current path that we're going down, because we are getting a lot of applications. Jeff is doing a master transportation plan. And based upon that master transportation plan, we'll know, you know, new bits of right of ways for major, minor collectors and things like that. And then after we've adopted that, we can get parametrics to redo the CIP numbers. In parallel, there's a third thing with the change in the, the state statutes, but we'll still do these.
And just for an update on everybody on the state statutes, you guys know that Terry's running for senate. And I don't, most of these bills have to be introduced through the house. So we'll see how that election goes the other, and I've talked to Megan Blakeman about that. She's willing to do that next fall. We're gonna jump on that early, I hope. But she's also, could be a first speaker of the house. So that position, we might lose her as well. So we gotta get through the election process to see who we're dealing with before we can go forward. And then I wanna get with both, everybody to make sure I got the right wording. We talked about different part plat change and land use and all that. And we've had some different ideas, but.
I think, I think it's probably an idea to, you need to look at that and make any revisions that is gonna suit the, suit the process the very best, so we're not.
Yeah. And I will, like I say, it already went to legislative service offices and they've already written the bill. It's all there, using your language.
And I prefer the land use change versus just a plat, because in the past, we were able to use this for commercial uses too. Based upon vehicle trips per day. Because a commercial use doesn't require.
But if you have a farmer that buys a piece of farm ground, that's not a land use change?
It's a state farm. What I'm talking about is a real estate office, gravel pit, or some other change in use. Not just a plat. A plat is typically just to partition the land, mostly for single-family residential.
Just put it all in there. A plat and/or land use change. I mean, you know, let's just cover ourselves once, so we don't have to.
I think that's where the second trap landed was, oh, plat and, and include both.
Well, yeah, I did. I got your comments, but my thinking is, we wanna encourage farmers to stay in business. If a guy wants to buy some ground and add it to his farm, I don't think we need to start dinging him for development agreements.
It doesn't count for this.
So, it's a plat change.
It's an ownership change.
It's an ownership. Well, so it's your definition of what is a plat change. Is it ownership? Is it use?
Partition of land, dividing land.
If he bought it and split it up into different parcels, it would, it would apply.
So if I am a generational farmer and I wanna give my heirs one acre parcel each, which is what most big landowners do, that's a plat change. And so I'd have to buy or pay for development agreements for one lots.
Unless planning and zoning comes up with an administrative split, and that's what they're currently working on. That'll look like.
That lot's going to have impacts.
It's gonna have an impact on the road.
And it's a change in use. It's not an agricultural use.
Right. That was the design of.
And I agree with that.
CIP program is that it is a, it is a per lot contribution. So even those subdivisions that would be one lot into two lots would pay a commensurate amount for the four hundred lot contribution, cause you're, you're building another house, put two more cars on the road, and it might be a really small contribution, but you're still par, you are also.
You're part of the share.
Paying your fair share.
We're treating everybody the same.
You can't make a difference between someone that's been here three hundred years and somebody that's been here two weeks. Everybody has to be treated the same.
Yeah. So if DF decides to start chugging off five hundred acre parcels, every time that happens, well, we will have to have a road development agreement for one lot.
If it's not an original parcel, yes.
Even if they're not building on it, still have to.
Sure. Cause you know they're gonna.
And then if they come back and they subdivide, they're gonna have to pay it again. The new owners would have to pay that again. Does that make sense?
Only with the change in use, yes.
So I wanna, I wanna make sure I'm clear, cause Eld, I know you expressed some concerns about two thousand and seven values. What Cindy has in that three-ring binder, if I'm, if that's what it is, if that's the CIP values from all seven, that is our best, that's the best available data we've got right now. You can use that until those numbers get updated. Or we can pause and update them and start this process.
No, let's go ahead and use those values until we get updated.
We're gonna miss out on a lot of income.
Boy, I like, I like those sounds of it. Well, and then guys that run the fence are gonna wanna use that value instead of the new one, so they'll probably.
Oh, yeah.
Some stuff will move. We'll, we'll gain, probably short-term, we'll get less, less money out of it. Send it to us. I don't want the whole document. Can you give us an example, like?
Okay. Three-inch asphalt, seventy-five dollars per ton.
Oh, man, wouldn't that be nice?
Six-inch gravel base, twenty-four. Eighteen-inch subbase, nineteen.
So what's that in percentages today's world, Jeff?
The cost.
Oh, just give you an idea of, so Lake Shore Drive, we did a Western Federal Lands flat grant on that years ago. We didn't get it. I was, when we reapplied for it last year, one year difference, uh, the engineers' parametrics said, use, use that same grant, change your dollar amount by thirty percent.
Thirty, yeah.
That was in two years.
Two years. So if you go back to two thousand and seven, you're probably looking at seventy.
You're probably looking at probably.
A hundred or a hundred and fifty percent.
Yeah, I, I mean, a ton of asphalt. I mean, you can look at our bids, we just did for.
What was it, seventy-two dollars a ton?
Suburts was eighty-some dollars a ton.
Eighty-some a dollar.
Josh's was a hundred and.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Hundred and sixty dollars a ton.
This is seventy-five.
But it, but irregardless, if we wanna start doing something, this is our best.
Start right there.
Yeah, that's what you have to do.
I'm already talking to people out in Gold Fork and Roberts and stuff, and this is what we are going with right now.
Yeah. And this question, how long will it take for parametrics to update that?
Update this?
The master plan's two years.
Just the cost. Oh, well, did, did they do the whole plan?
This was before my time. I.
This was in oh-seven, it was before my time too.
Not mine.
Who did the plan? So you, so even before we get the new transportation plan and all that stuff, could you ask them to bring us that up to date?
You could.
This is part of the transportation plan though, isn't it?
This is referenced in the master transportation plan.
But.
It was put out before the master transportation.
Was referenced in it.
But was that done before or after the transportation plan? I can't remember the dates in there. Cause our transportation plan was oh-eight. This was oh-seven, so it came out first.
So could we, could we just, that could be another stage? We just.
You, you could ask parametric.
Start with this and ask them if they wanna get an update, you know?
Jeff has the money.
Once you get a current update, you just come back here and readjust, you know, that process?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you may not have to worry, wait for several years to get that. Just go ask them for.
I mean, this, this could be months out. It could be, it just depends on.
Right.
On how quickly they can get to the project and, and give us some good, some good data.
Yeah. But the bottom line is, is the best thing for us to do now is to adopt this process that you're handing us, move on with it, get an update when we can, and just jump into the game. So did you remember how much it costs parameters to do that whole thing?
They probably still have it online. They would probably just have to update the costs.
That's what I'm thinking. If you, if you can amend that plan to update the costs, they could do that. Now, it seemed to me like those, the costs could be changed pretty quickly.
It may be simple.
It could, yeah.
I, I didn't wanna assume that Jeff had this in this year's budget to do it or any of those kinda things, so.
I think we could probably find it, cause we're gonna repay the county in short order.
Yeah. We could take it out of commissioner's salary.
We don't make that much. We'd have to have three years worth.
I got, I've always got quite a bit of money in, uh, called Doug, professional services. Always keep about a hundred and fifty thousand in there, just cause there's always stuff that pops up that's.
So give them a call, let us know, keep us in the loop on that, how soon they can find out if they can just amend this one, if they have to do the whole, redo the whole thing.
Have to come back as an action item for you.
Right, right.
If, if we can get it done in short order, that would be, that would be good.
And then you guys are gonna float it to P and Z.
Um, Cindy?
Oh, this doesn't have to be approved by P and Z.
Okay.
This is something the board approves. And it's part of the master transportation plan. They're referenced in there.
Then the next question I had is, on your cover letter for these subs coming in, there'll be a spot that, yeah, Jeff saw this, signed this.
Just writing it. I did the, I did the, I, I kinda did the format, kinda said, here's some ideas for you. And that's what I'm saying is, this is a heavy lift for the road department. Is the, you know, this is a, a much more, a much more involved process than the, I think the road department has been asked to do in the past. If you go and look at the planning and zoning discussion during these plats, they're, they're really looking for comments from the experts. They want the road department to tell them what needs to be done with the roads. So they, so they don't have to come up with it during the middle of the hearing. And.
We don't have expert P and Z commissioners on.
Right. You know, and I like that because you could comment, hey, this road needs to be, new culverts need to be right of way widened, whatever. These is, and you don't say, I don't wanna do it all, but this is what needs to be done. And then let P and Z pick out those, pick that apart.
Already in here, right.
Oh, in the plan.
Yes. Let's see, this one.
So, can you give us a one for Roseberry Village or whatever you call it, that road? What is that? Don Drive? What is that?
West Roseberry.
West Roseberry. What does it say for that? Just.
Do you want me to send that to you? I have a copy of.
I think I have one in my file cabinet down here, but electronic would be great.
West Roseberry. Study boundary, north half mile of West Roseberry, Lake Cascade, Willcrick, Lake Cascade. Intersection of Providence State Highway fifty-five and West Roseberry, Norwood and West Roseberry. Right of way costs. Three point four miles of local roads with sent, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of improvements, of concrete bridge decking, two hundred and forty thousand, major collector. I mean, they just list out the improvements that were required at that time. I don't think anyone, the, the S bridge is not in here.
We, we rebuilt the Norwood, West Roseberry intersection. That's part of that deal. Plus, we built, well, that bridge over Mud Creek there, that was some emergency money that replaced that. And I don't know what this concrete bridge decking is. Maybe take the grates off and do a concrete deck on it. I don't know.
But I'm sure that parametrics would know what they were after. Might need to include the S bridge. But, you know, that kinda has to wait for the master transportation plan to identify. Maybe that traffic is dispersed.
Just because everybody's complaining about the one thing, doesn't mean that. My opinion, again, it's not the road that can't handle the people, it's the people that can't handle the road.
But see, like there, instead of coming, going to Dolly, they could go north and go out, get to the highway that way.
About, but the intersection at Sheline's horrible, the intersection at Smiley's horrible, just because of visibility problems.
Fairbrother's good.
Fairbrother's okay. Got the Humpty Dumps to the south of it that people can pop over at a hundred miles an hour.
I stopped doing that, Jeff. I don't do that anymore. I go to Crow Creek now. Crow Creek's got.
That, that, that's after you run over the street signs on the side of the road?
I didn't hit those.
All right. But, once you have the master transportation, that, I mean, parametrics at this time can insert the costs based on this plan. But to redo this, you know, and all these improvements that need to be done, I think you need to wait till your master transportation plan's done.
I agree a hundred percent.
That's why I was asking, which ones? Chicken or the egg?
I think you need the chicken before the egg, and I think that's, it's a game.
So the cost, just update the cost, do that one quickly. And we're probably gonna update them again once the master plan gets here, because by then, we'll know exactly what they're gonna recommend. But I agree, we need to look at traffic flow also in that master plan. Are we gonna move people north and south, off fifty-five potentially? They had a rollover crash this weekend and, you know, it just blocks traffic for hours at a time.
That was a bad time to be on any of our back roads.
Yes, it was. Well, that was a main road.
It's a highway, but it kicked people off onto Smiley, down Norwood, and the Sula, and Farmer Market, and Spink, and.
Near what, five inches of slush?
Five inches of slush and mud and holes and. That was a bad.
So, just administratively, when we get to the point where we are at the table with the developer discussing terms of a development agreement, ultimately, you're the final say. So what, what process do you prefer? Do you want Jeff, myself, Cindy, and the developer to develop a draft, have it as close to done as we think it needs to be, and then schedule this on Monday agenda action item, invite the developer, and then you guys can, can either vote it up or down? Or do you wanna have a seat at the table from the very beginning?
No, I think that's appropriate. I, I would also include when you expect that, that money. Sometimes they'll wait till after their development, and they sold a few lots. Sometimes they'll do it upfront. I think that's a part of. Okay, we need a hundred thousand, fifty thousand, we need that. Before you start, I mean, there's some details you gotta really, you know, top of there, but.
Yeah.
And if you guys come in with it, and it's all agreed upon, everybody's happy, the road department, all we do is sign off on it and go.
I think the timing would be between P and Z approval and final plat with the county commissioners. Somewhere in there.
Prior to final plat.
Prior to final plat.
Final payment.
No, to have a development agreement.
Oh.
And the money.
Yeah, when, when do we get the money?
That's my.
Road or before the, everything stamped and signed off?
You just said, are, are, are we taking the, the money after they sell a few lots?
No, that's what I don't wanna, I wanna avoid that, because that's what we ran into in the past. The check's in the mail, it's coming and it never.
No, we, we always made them, uh, pay before they recorded the plat.
Good. And that should be in that agreement.
Okay.
Definitely.
So after P and Z approval, before county commissioners.
And, and I think one of the, one of the things that I guess is implied in this is these become, potentially become new priorities for the road department. As we have, get this infusion of capital coming into the, the road department. So I think that just needs to be a dialogue that stays on the table. We keep talking about and that everybody's expectations are being met as far as, as how, how Jeff prioritizes the work and spends the money. And most importantly, I think, is report that back to you as the board, governing board, and the public and those that contribute to this fund, that those dollars are being spent the way that we promised that they would.
And I think a lot of these developers are probably gonna have it in that agreement that, you know, when there's. you know, when, is this money going to get spent? Because that was the rub years ago, was you've been, you've had my money for eight years now and nothing's happening, and that's when things started falling apart.
And we need to be careful about that because we're going to have people that are putting five houses in, and they're going to come and go, I gave you money and I want my road fixed. And that is not going to happen. So priorities need to be based on need. And, you know, so we need to be really careful about making a statement on when these funds are going to be used. Even for a large development, because honestly, I mean, I can just think of, you know, if we do have to replace the S bridge, we're going to have to have federal money, which could take three or four years. So this could be grant match for that federal money. And so we, we need to be careful without obligating ourselves to do anything on any timeline. We will use these funds as the county sees fit. We will keep them in a separate pool of funds specifically for this road base. But we will determine, you know, whether we're...
Best use for them at the best time.
Honestly, I think we should leave that up to the road department.
Yeah, and that's, and that's where I think the inherent tension is in this. The developers are going to come to the table with expectations that their contributions are going to benefit their subdivision directly. Meaning that they want to pave road to their subdivision and it get built within a certain period of time. They're going to want to put that in the road development agreement. So if you're going to be the final reviewer, I want, I want to kind of set that expectation right up front that, you know, we may push back on that and say, no, we're not going to do that. We're going to put these funds into a, into the whole area. Don't want them kind of backdooring the process, calling you up independently.
Right.
And you not even, not have the inside.
The challenge is going to be to the P and Z, when they present, when they present, the P and Z has to make it very clear what that road agreement does, what it means. You're moving into a area, we anticipate per house, certain amount of impact. And that's not just to that road right in front of your property, that's to the area.
And that comes from the road department.
Yeah, and that's, um...
That's what I'm explaining to him right now, after we got this thing going. Pulled that map out of the back, back room, hung it in my office. So I can tell people, it's like, just because you're on West Roseberry, that doesn't necessarily mean your money's going to be spent right out of your house.
Right.
You want to go spend it over here on Camerac Falls or Norwood or...
If you, if you were to do that, you'd be killing fire, I mean, you'd be killing snakes everywhere.
I will, and so I'm going to try and capture this the best I can in the other plate language of the development agreement. I can circulate that just as a general, you know, a, a, a complete development agreement, but get everybody's input on the language, what you like, what you want to see captured in there that's not.
Kind of.
So we, we can launch this. But those conditions of approval that sends the developer to Jeff to negotiate this development agreement are part of these Platts that are being reviewed right now.
Right.
In front of planning and zoning. So this process is, is already kind of out of the gates.
Well, it started about six months ago.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And I think if you got a developer, you know, is pushing you, part of that road development agreement is, I might not be able to use this money for three more years. You're going to have to make those calls.
It's all part of it.
Or, you know what, we're going to be here building this road up, we can come over and do your section of the road, or whatever that is at the same time. You know, but leave yourself that discretion. I don't think that's, that's not our call. You, you know your schedules and your time and how much you got.
No, do we sign off on that annual road agreement that goes to the state, Doug?
Yes.
So there are the top ten priority roads that are already listed on that thing, so always look. There's a report that goes to the state. It always shows the top ten, and that does reaffirm for Jeff that we have looked at his decision on those top ten roads and that we are in concurrence with it. And that may not always be impacted by these road development agreements, but it will speak to them.
So when are they starting in the master transportation plan?
I got to get ahold of LTAC and see when I can start putting the RFPs out for it.
Commissioner Robyn, I don't know if that determines priority, it just provides a list of the roads that are future projects.
Basically shows how far behind we are in...
It says, I mean, just for, when this road was submitted, it was Spring Valley, Rock Crushing Program, Heinrich Lane, Johnson, Lake Shore Drive, East Roseberry, Wild Goose, Pearson Lane, Patty Flat. So that's just providing an overall review of the, of future projects and funding that is technically dedicated to those projects.
Some of those are on my...
At least five of them I think of this year.
Maybe we should, a week prior to submitting this to Doug, you come in with your top priorities, we reaffirm those with you. And, because we're the ones that are hearing it all the time. I mean, I constantly am reaching out to you and telling you, oh my God, this is what I've heard this week. But I think that it does give comfort that we are reaffirming your choices and your decision, and that just supports you and your efforts. You know, we may have something that we say, eh, I really think you better do this. But then it is the top ten that goes into the state.
Well, and then there's other things that, along with like Warren Wagon was kind of a surprise when we were going to get such a huge grant.
There's always stuff, that's why I need to pack up money because...
This is an opportunity we can't miss, so this goes off the list.
Moves up or, all my roads falls apart right now.
Wisdom.
It's getting patched today, it's already done.
Oh, you're a good, good man. About buried my car last week.
We had about three messages on the machine this morning, I was like, oh.
Where's wisdom?
Anyway, I, I like the idea though that what we've done here is kind of, not, we're trying to avoid.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Promising. You come in as a, a developer. Okay, yeah, you, you're, you're here in this area, it is costing, it's costing Valley County, it's just, it's the way it is. We need your, we're, we're going to assess you a little bit for this, we hope. You know, but it may not go right in front of your door. It's going to go into our plan. In other words, we have a plan, we have made this plan, you know, so go into that.
I'm not quite sure when we got away from that.
I am. What was the lawsuit date?
Couple of lawsuits were filed. And, and I reviewed those lawsuits and, and on the, on some of the critically important points, the county prevailed. And one of those, in the Buckhorn litigation was that the Supreme Court said that the counties do have the authority to negotiate voluntary road development agreements. And, and the the agreement that was put in place said that it was voluntary, that everybody signed off on it, but then the developer came back and said, well, this really isn't voluntary. Because you may, we, we wouldn't have got our plat approved without voluntarily signing off on it, so it was, it really wasn't voluntary.
Potentially too, true, I mean, you have a big road impact, you're not going to get...
There's still the risk for controversy associated with that, but in that particular case...
But we prevailed.
We prevailed.
Yeah.
We didn't lose any of them. It just cost us money for the attorney.
When was that? Two thousand twelve?
Two thousand eight.
Yeah, it seems like oh eight, oh nine.
Right at, when everything tanked is when people started coming in, wanting money back.
Yep.
And then we just didn't have new, sorry, Jeff, we didn't have new subdivisions coming in, so we were like...
That all went away because nothing was happening.
There was nothing happening.
So is there going to be a difference between commercial, residential, high density, low density, affordable housing?
It's per lot.
Per day.
Well, it's per lot, doesn't matter if it's...
And there's a vehicle trip per day.
If there's nothing to do with like heavy truck traffic, like what we're dealing with with Sheline, is it, right now?
Smiley.
Smiley? I mean, maybe we need to look at, if you got a rock pit and you're going to run six amount of trucks out of that road, that's different than...
I, I hate throwing the West Roseberry manufactured home park back in, but I was thinking with two hundred and one units, and I think that CIP calls for about three thousand bucks a lot.
Thirty-eight ninety-four. Thirty-eight ninety-four.
Is that the number? So basically four thousand dollars a lot, that's a lot of money. Two hundred thousand dollars.
Even at two thousand seven.
That's two thousand seven dollars.
Yeah.
Is there...
I don't think we can discuss this site specific.
No, but even if, because we're going to hear it.
I was just wondering if there's going to be any... Well, that's up to you guys in planning and zoning, if there's going to be any...
If you put four hundred cars on a road a day, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars is cheap.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, that's, that's the size of how many subdivisions.
Jeff's point is that they're going to haul those houses there, and that's going to be a bigger impact, I guess, than all of the trucks that are going to haul in all the timbers and stuff.
Just everything.
So it costs more for a manufactured home than, you know, for ten trucks and all that stuff.
This guy's trying to put in affordable housing. Worker housing, whatever. All of a sudden, we're going to throw a four thousand dollar lot fee on this guy, and he's going to move it, he's going to take that fee and move it right over.
Is it subdivision or PUD?
The subdivision costs.
I don't think we should talk about this until we can get... We're going to get ourselves in hot water here really fast.
That's fine, I just, just stuff going through my head.
Any subdivision, any hypothetical subdivision, that is an issue. You know, these are, these are costs that we are asking for contribution from the developer, and, and that cost will add additional cost to it. There might be unique circumstances that come along where planning and zoning or this board may want to make adjustments.
Yeah, that, that's what I was trying to...
Incentives.
Because there are unique features associated with those subdivision proposals, there may be incentives. Or they, or there may be additional costs that need to be captured into that because they may have an extra, an extra high burden on the road for whatever reason. So I think we, you know, that's the reason we sit at the table and we negotiate. And, and take into consideration the unique features of any, any particular subdivision that they, they want certain incentives integrated into that, cost cutting because affordable housing or hypothetically any, anything that's on the table.
And if it's kind of like the development above the school that we had, they could come in and get a sixty-six oh two tax break on those for five years.
Oh, yeah, for high, for more than four, five or...
They'll get a benefit from that. Doesn't mean we need to give them necessarily a break when we're there on the road development, but there's other things that are available to them as well.
Also, do you restrict a certain number of units?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three?
Sixty-three twenty-two. I don't know.
Remember when we did that? You were on the board, weren't you?
I still remember code numbers.
If you want, in my letter that Cinda helped me with, do you want me to put the dollar amount per lot on every one I do?
No.
No, no dollar.
No, I think that comes out of the plan.
That's, that's for the road development agreement.
Yeah.
So I leave it just pretty much like the way you have it worded as a recommendation to, reference two thousand seven, CIP cost comparison for that. With a predetermined cost per lot, but I'm not actually putting that cost in there.
No. They're probably going to ask you what it is because they don't have the plan.
Well, the P and Z doesn't care.
The P and Z has a plan.
P and Z doesn't care what the dollar amount is. They can, I mean, we're not going to sit there and say, well, that's not enough.
No.
We're going to, you know, follow that.
Okay.
But that's for a PUD, that's for something different, you know, and specific to the West Roseberry area with the S bridge. So not every subdivision's going to look just like that one.
But this is a start of what all of them are going to look like, but with different recommendations in there.
For each one individually.
Well, and Jeff, that's why I was saying before this discussion that if you would keep track of, and Cinda and I can help you keep track of agendas for planning and zoning that are coming up, then you can have an idea or a concept that needs to go into these letters that are specific to the area where the subdivision is being proposed.
For example, when you did the horse arena up on... I'm thinking of it.
Potter Lane.
Potter Lane, thank you. Um, that was certain vehicle trips per day, so you would apply the vehicle trips per day here. But they agreed to dust mitigate. I mean, so those are your options in there.
Okay. So to get this thing started, I just need to kind of do a general deal and then get with you guys and...
You may have bridges or culverts or repaving or...
Caligarts.
Who knows that are caligarts specific to, specific to that area that you want to reference in your letter. What your needs are, not getting the planning and zoning commission down or your future road development agreement down to any one thing in this. This is just, the audience of this letter is the planning and zoning commission. What you're trying to do is give them a concept of what the needs are and, and really broaden it beyond just the road where this subdivision is, but what the needs are for the CIP that's impacted by this proposal. What you need in the X CIP area, this road culverts in these areas.
And it also gives direction to the developer applicant. They're going to have to do this.
Okay.
Jeff, I have a question for you too, because I've seen a lot more of it lately, the last few years, but when you require someone to do dust mitigation on a road, do you actually call the dust company and make those arrangements, or do they?
They.
Because I, I think that's great because that's just more work that you don't need to be doing.
All I require them to do is call me.
So then who checks on them and say, hey, did you, you go and look at the road yet? You got dust abatement or nope, you didn't, and send them a letter?
No, I mean, it's, we don't even have an agreement in place for that. It's all, it's all the same people every year. Call me two weeks before you do it so I can get a blade scheduled out there, because if you put it down and that road's full of potholes, I'm going to come out and tear it up. And if this road needs to be bladed throughout the summer because of potholes, we're not liable for that dust abatement. You're going to have to pay for reapply or whatever.
So who has to do dust abatement now?
Toby's in North American. The only two I know of around here.
Who has?
North American is out of Emmett.
Who is required to do the dust abatement?
Um, right now, it's the horse arena on West, East Potter.
Is that an indefinite commitment that they'll...
That's our problem. We, we started working on an agreement a couple of years ago. And then between Carol and Brian Novel and everything, everything kind of got pushed aside, but we need to get something. And I don't know if that was...
I'm surprised. I saw that deep side.
No, that was a requirement, that was, they suggested to keep the native...
That that was a condition of approval.
Yeah.
And if it is, then it's forever.
Okay.
So that P and Z would enforce that, here, here, not you.
So code enforcement person could watch that stuff.
No, that's, that's what the road department, we're not going to go out and make sure somebody's doing dust abatement.
That's why, yeah, we need to fix that.
The, this dust abatement as a condition of approval is so difficult for me to conceptualize how you would police it and how you would coordinate that, so so it isn't applied the day before the road department goes out there and blades the road and completely upends it. So that's, I, I don't know, is there something...
It just works with the road department. Are there others besides just the one?
Is there a more productive way that we could put some conditions of approval in that don't...
A lot of it, honestly, is tied to when they grade the road. That's what I wait for. Soon as they grade my road, then I call North American and hey, we're ready to go, and I let all my neighbors know they do it.
I think it's just that one.
Is there one out here off Clear Creek? I remember there, they came in and they were upset over the fact that it was public right of way, and they're putting down dust abatement every year.
It sounds to me like we've...
It's one of those skunk creek right there.
Entered into something you really can't manage.
That's, that's what they do.
So why just tell them?
If you want to maintain...
Why just take it off?
Care of the dust, you...
Yeah, go back and renegotiate that. Man, I...
I mean, there's been times where...
Jeff could renegotiate that with them though.
Yeah.
Just, just the little homeowners here and there that put it down. They get really mad when my road grader goes out there at three o'clock in the morning, because we usually start early. And once the water truck goes through, you can't tell the difference between untreated, treated. Sorry.
I think you're, I think you're, if you start entering into those kind of things, you're just creating a more problem for yourself.
Yeah, what happened with the Beharn.
Yeah.
On the GIS map, is there a way that you can somehow have Cara update where you're going to be in the next, you know, two weeks or something like that? On the G I S map, is there a way that you can somehow have Kara update where you're gonna be in the next, you know, two weeks or something like that? So.
No, it's too hard to keep up with the grading. It's not on a schedule. It's.
As time allows?
Usually you can tell. I mean, the stuff Elk puts down is more than earth mined. It's not a calcium chloride. It, it's black. It looks like pavement.
It's twelve hundred bucks a year.
Put it down for twenty years, everybody knows it's there.
Twelve hundred a what?
A year. It'll last all year.
Mm-hmm.
It's interesting, because that's where the snow melts first in the spring. My barnyard is bone dry and I got snow in my lung. I like it. I love the stuff, but it used to be eight hundred, now it's twelve hundred.
This company, I think you should go renegotiate that because the.
But you've got East Fork, Jeff, you've got Johnson Creek. There's a lot of dust abatement for the Forest Service that, you know, we deal with too. It's not just a few here and there.
Yeah, the big ones. Yeah.
There's big ones.
With the Forest Service, we've got big ten-page agreements with them. Same thing, it gets potholes in it, we go blade it.
I think the enforcement is huge. We have to think about what we're signing up for when we do these kinda things.
Well, there's just the one.
Right now, there's only one that's got a condition of approval, and that's the Horse Arena.
And it's totally unfair to them.
It was, it sounds like it.
There's thirty other, there's thirty houses on the street.
Yeah. Hey, we done? We gotta move on. Good? Sounds like we got a plan. Is there, it said it's an action item. Do you need a motion?
Nope. I can see some direction though. In this case.
No, he's needed your direction.
Hey. I'm gonna take a quick break and I'll be right back.
Mr. Kir. He's on right now. I've been.
Heck, I liked the schedule. I thought I'm gonna get home early today. You gotta give me a minute.
That's you guys calling.
I, I think we stay here first. I wanna make some noise.
One of these days, I won't have to be wearing my heavy coat anymore.
From your lips to God's ears. And from your lips to God's ears. Hard to happen to wear my coat.
Please listen. You guys had it easy up here, right? I had twenty inches of my yard down.
It's kinda tough on Jeff. Jeff's program probably, but it's sure good for the country.
That's true.
All right, thank you all.
See ya. We need it, that's for certain.
Hey, well, we've had, in the last several years, we've had way too many early springs.
Mr. Schroeder, can you hear us?
Looks good. I can.
Hey, fantastic. I, I can. The chairman has just stepped out. We will allow you about fifteen minutes as soon as he gets back.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Is this the?
This is an opportunity for the general public to present to the commissioners, Commissioner Allen.
Mm-hmm. What, um, this one here, the executive session, what's going on with that?
We can talk about it when we get in there.
I know, but it's later, after this. It's like, yeah, it's not, well, it's, yeah. Okay, we're, we're back online. Are we on Doug still?
Yes, sir.
Uh, next up on our agenda, we have some, uh, public input from the outside. Uh, Mr. Schroeder, I guess we'll turn it over to you and see where we go.
Okay, great. Uh, uh, thank you, uh, commissioners, uh, for, uh, uh, affording this opportunity for the public to give input. I'd just like to make a quick introduction. Um, I, can you see me on my video, or is this just?
Yes, yep.
Oh, okay. Um, anyway, uh, my name's Jeff Schroeder. Uh, I'm an attorney with MSBT Law. And I'm a candidate for District Eight, uh, State Senator. And I'd like to, uh, just take a minute to introduce myself and, uh, give you some of my background if you, if you're interested, but mostly I'm interested in hearing, uh, questions that you might have or any concerns or issues that, uh, that cover Valley County. Uh, I think maybe one or two of you heard me speak at the Lincoln Day Dinner up there in Valley County, so. I grew up in Camai on a ranch, went to the University of Idaho, um, served twenty-one years in the Army. I lived in Mountain Home for thirty-two years. I served two terms in the Mountain Home City Council. Eight years as a Republican precinct committeeman, vice chair and legislative district chair. And, uh, became an attorney in twenty eighteen. Currently, I, I represent sixteen different cities in one capacity or another. A countywide library district, and I'm a city prosecutor, a primary one for Mountain Home, assistant in, uh, in McCall and three other cities. In fact, I was just in court in, uh, Valley County this morning for one case for the city of McCall. Um, so with that, I, my, my main motivation for running is seeing time and time again at legislative sessions, the move by the legislature to, uh, kinda withdraw some of the local control that our local governments have. The, the most responsive and most effective governments that are closest to the people. Um, you see inroads where, where attempts are made to take away, um, local cities and counties and the other districts' ability to govern themselves based upon complaints that may or may not have factual bases. So I guess with that, I, I'd stand for any questions.
Jeff, this is Commissioner Haswick. I appreciate your attitude about us, you know, the state taking away a lot of our controls. We've had a lot of big changes over the last few years with indigent fund and the health district funding. And this next winter is gonna be the Public Defense Commission and, and I don't know if we're getting the short end of the stick or not. We haven't really seen yet, but, um, I know that it, it's kind of upsetting when you have, um, a really low levy rate and a really high, um, uh, forgone fund, and they come in and say, we're gonna take it because you shouldn't have it. And you're trying to do a, a good job and, and they kinda kick you in the teeth. And that's how it's felt for the last couple of years. But it is what it is till it isn't.
Well, well, I, I've spent some time thinking about how, um, I would approach things because I would be, I would be kind of, you know, new there. But I've been following the legislative process in the legislature for well over fifteen years, most closely since two thousand ten. I've spent time with state senators and, and representatives and elected officials. And one thing I found frustrating is so much time is spent at the beginning of a session, uh, kinda spinning wheels, um, engaging in various performance art or, or theatrics. And then the nuts and bolts of things like you talk about. Uh, attacks on forgone balances and purported, um, you know, uh, excessive spending by local governments just come at the very last minute without really thinking things all the way through. And I know that I, I've spoken to some people in the Senate leadership and, you know, I think they, they kinda support, first of all, my, um, jumping in the ring. Um, but it, it's my, it's my intention to, to try to either offer solutions or to just roll up my sleeves and get to work at the beginning of a session to try to fix some of the damaging things that have been done, particularly over the past couple of years. Um, House Bill three eighty-nine in, in particular, uh, I, I really think needs to be fixed. It has done some damage. Um, your point about the Public Defense Commission is interesting as well. I deal with public defenders, um, every day almost. And I, I think they do, well, they do a constitutionally required service, but I don't think it's fair to put the burden necessarily on local taxpayers when it is a state and federal constitutional mandate that that service be provided to criminal, indigent criminal defendants. Uh, I would note that a well-qualified and well-paid public defender gets me more guilty convictions and guilty pleas than someone who is, uh, simply just trying to fight it at every turn. If we have a good set of evidence, uh, and, and have done adequate disclosures of that evidence, and the defendant is guilty, a competent and, and diligent public defender will, will recommend and advise his client to put guilty. And so that's, that's part of the bang for the buck that people get with public defenders.
Jeff, what would be your communication strategy with commissioners? We have a hard time with trying to get responses and communication back and forth. If you have something coming up that you're going to address, will you be reaching out to us for input?
Absolutely. Uh, it's my intent, of course, we've got a, a few rocks in the way, uh, today. Uh, it was, it was my intent to drive up there, um, beginning of legislative session. I have, um, well, I, I can tell you that Friday morning, I went and met with Elmore County Commissioners. And, uh, I just got on at, at nine AM. They kinda have an open, open agenda. But this, this phone, two oh eight, five nine nine, zero six four one, I spoke to the mayor of Irwin. And, uh, what, who's the other mayor? Uh, two mayors before nine AM. Um, so all these cities and local government members have, have my cell phone number, and I am accessible and reachable. And if there are issues I think that affect counties, I intend to, to visit and communicate, uh, with local governments, um, as, as often as possible. But, uh, any local government citizen would have my, have the ability to get ahold of me, particularly with regard to, to, um, legislation that affects local governments, uh, the ability to tax, uh, in, interaction with health districts, you, you name it. And I have experience dealing with, um, state and federal agencies, uh, and how they interact with local governments as well. I've represented a couple of cities that started to get into, uh, some problems with the, the EPA. We, I had to deal with them. I deal with the Department of Environmental Quality quite a bit. I represent a city, um, that was the first in the state to use the Race Tire Disposal Act to get a deficiency warrant to clean up five thousand race tires in the middle of the city of DuBois. That's still some ongoing litigation, but we got the tires moved.
And what do you know about county budgets?
There's, we, county budgets have a, a lot more, you have a lot more constitutionally mandated and statutorily mandated duty, duty of the jail, the, you know, um, I, I know they're extensive, and I know that there are, um, a lot of mandated things for which you must budget.
And you'd be willing to listen to our input when you're trying to impact our budgets? Cause that is what the largest conversation's been the last two years.
It. It is something that has made me the most angry over watching the legislature over the past few years is the fact that you have, whether it's county commissioners or city councils, or folks who are just trying to do their level best to deliver the services. And in the case of counties, it's not just services you wish to do, it's, it's services you must do. You must provide the jail, you must provide a sheriff, a coroner and so forth. And yet, you're continually having the rug yanked out from underneath you. Uh, if there are things that, that affect your ability to, to deliver those services, um, you, I absolutely will communicate with you. I have, I have in my role as a city attorney have asked, uh, mayors and council members, um, when I didn't think it would be a fool's errand that the fix was already in, to go and testify or communicate with the legislators about issues facing. Um, particularly with, with regard to, um, your ability to, uh, to levy. This is the, this is the, um, frustrating thing about talking about property taxes reform. Property taxes support services that give property part of the value upon which it's taxed. You have the ability to get to your property because there's a road to get you to it. You have an ability to know who owns the property, uh, that you own because there is a record of it kept at the county courthouse. You have the ability to litigate, uh, fights with your neighbor or ownership of your property in a court system, uh, that is funded in part by property taxes. You have a sheriff, you have a coroner, and so on and so forth. All of these things are funded by property taxes. And so saying that you wanna get rid of them completely, or that they're somehow unfair, or the people are being taxed out of their homes, uh, betrays or, or, yeah, betrays an ignorance of what property taxes are for and how property that is taxed gets its value. If you didn't have any of those services, the property wouldn't be worth that much. So, you know, I'm a strong advocate. If, if your county is mandated constitutionally to do a whole list of things, and you take away your ability to fund it, uh, and I'm, I'm highly skeptical of shifting that funding to state, uh, state revenues like, um, sales tax or income tax because those things fluctuate. The property tax is one of the, one of the most stable sources of, of revenue for our county or, or our local government.
Well, Jeff, thank you very much for coming online and introducing yourself. We appreciate that. Um, see how everything goes. Um, you're certainly welcome to come on up here anytime and, you know, it's, let people get to know you.
I think, uh, there's some folks in McCall set up a little, uh, meet and greet event in, uh, on the seventh in Donnelley. I plan to come up, but I plan to come up a few times, uh, between now and then. I've got some friends that have places in, in McCall and so forth. So I'll, I'll be up there and I'll be reaching out. I, I have the, I think the website should be live today. And I'm also getting some advertising in the paper today. So if anyone has any questions, please write down my number, two oh eight, five nine nine, zero six four one. And, uh, happy to answer any questions. And I, uh, look forward hopefully to serving you in the Senate.
All right. Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Thanks for reaching out.
Do that. Thanks. I'll ask what they do to judge me. Excuse me?
Okay, so at this time, we have an executive session, and that is our last agenda item for the day, so we'll probably, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, Doug?
Adjourn after.
Adjourn. Thank you very much. I just went blank. We'll be adjourned after that, so we'll see everybody next week.
Wanna go and make a.
So, yeah, so at this time, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive for, I have a code seventy-four, two oh six, one B.
So moved.
No, I'll, I'll second. Moved and seconded by roll call, please.
Mom and I.
Yeah, Alan. That's Brooke I. Doug will be in at, uh, let's say, two forty-five.